Of course, you can see mine is one of the two. And again, where they don't want to hold the batteries together. So, I know a lot of them saying a lot of use. That's a life mine, that's holding on. The body cameras, we got to have those because BLJ mandates one time. Uh, and then, and we run a pretty cheap body camera for the price, uh, for what they offer. This evening, that. Now getting down to the special operations stuff. The, uh, uh, rounds are needed for practice. Now, we get a lot of them for the, uh, officers to perform themselves. That's for every officer on the, on the department. Now, running the SRU team, we do more shooting, more, uh, more obstacles, more than we do to hone the skills. And that's where that ammunition is coming in. Whether you are it, whether you're going to hone the skills of it. So, that's, that's where that's coming in there. And we, special ops gear, we're just scratching the surface. I mean, we, we don't have near what we need. But I try to have what we need to get something done. Now, when something happens, everybody's going to look, get the sheriff. Right, you got some special people to do that. Yeah, any, during his administration, we have to put the people together. But we still need stuff to get things done. And to say it don't happen, it's happened. From seventeen, we formed ten. Eighteen was our business year. I think we had a, uh, a little over twelve call-ups. Uh, hostage rescue, hostage, uh, barricade subjects. Uh, you know, we pray that to good police, and that's why you never hear nothing about it. But we saw a man went in the hard way with junk. So, we need good stuff. So, that's why I put that in, in there to see if he could get this. I'm here to address that. So, we need this stuff. Uh, do I get any other questions about the body cameras?
Ryan, you're basically asking for the first item, plus the jail video cameras and fifteen jail radios at the bottom mark. You just said you really need.
Yes, sir, uh, yes, those two items at the bottom, we need all four ways out. Uh, cameras, yes, nine and ten. Uh, eleven, we'll skip that out.
Nine and ten, and those are what you need, really, for the night?
Well, yes, yes, um, and we have six officers in the police academy. As many cameras have gone down. We don't have enough for everybody. Just want to say that they graduate, come out, and have a camera. And that, that, that's a bad problem. Uh, and, and body cameras, uh, for the particular ones that LP was talking about here. Total price is nineteen thousand, one hundred thirty dollars. That's, that's very cheap. It's, it's, it's a one-piece design. We started out with a two-piece design, which had that piece, basically, set up in the top of your ear. So, everything that, uh, the officer saw. Problem with that, with the same vics, it's also got to get in. The wiring and the camera cables, some lights. So, one-piece design is, is tougher. Uh, it, it'll take a little more abuse, and, and they have less of all.
You were looking at a twelve-hundred-dollar camera. We used to use close to a two-hundred-and-eighty-dollar camera.
Yes, sir, thanks for your question.
Really, one, nine, ten, or probably, I, Chris, I just want to know, that's, that's obviously, you need, you, you really need that right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you rest up.
And the portable radio?
Uh, well, yes, sir, I see that. Uh, number two, now, he, he, here is a temporary solution. If we wanted to take number ten and postpone it, if we could replace the voices of number two, we could ask that the better ones into, uh, the jail for the time being.
I think if you need those five, number nine, ten, also, I think you're probably, I think you ought to talk to go for it, see what they did.
Okay, thank you.
Any other numbers? Numbers, kitchen generator?
That came as a result of the C-Test study. Long story short, uh, the kitchen never was linked to a generator. Um, we've been there twelve years, and we've survived without it. Um, this, this last episode, which came through the first time, where they called us in by, and we lost our food. Um, insurance took care of it. The walk-in refrigerator, the walk-in freezer are the two items that are really important. The two-hundred-and-fifty thousand is, is powered the entire kitchen and, and the labor that goes with it. Um, I'm not a labor engineer, don't know how to hold up a generator, and when to start, when it gets to start. Uh, with those two items being the most pressing issue, I, I would think we'd find something smaller without, um.
Yeah, let's revisit that.
That, and, and like I said, I, I would really like, you know, the jail committee and budget committee, either buy me more time or have Chris and me look and get some better quotes.
Yeah, let's, let's look at the more urgent stuff, get that all figured. And, uh, I'd really make the budget, I mean, even before you did that, we seem to want to get, get a, and get a, uh, transfer just for those items right now. I don't want to attempt this others who we talked about. Does that, does that sound prior to you? Give the mayor, build up, set up a budget meeting, try to age for that.
Thank you.
I hate going here and go, there's a lot of stuff to do, like, but.
Probably, you want to.
Uh, so, you know, you know, we're not on that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that'd be good. I'll try to get the committee together, sort of, to have that before the question came in.
Same, great.
On the thirty-five body cameras and forty-four radio, is that going to get you up to where you need to be with all of your people?
Yes.
So, that's going to replace everything you've got right now, with each, right?
Yes.
So, going forward, so, I mean, this is all coming out of the department money right here, but this question.
Yes.
But do you have a plan or something in place going forward to keep things maintained, keep them replaced as it were after? What you're telling me, this stuff wears out on a pretty regular basis?
Well, it does. I, I'd say ten years is, is a good life if you want to give it abuse. Uh, currently, no, we don't have a plan. We just, just some followers when, when the need is.
Is there, is there a budget? I'm not sure if you can work something in, or create it?
There, there will be this year. Sheriff and I spoke about several items, such as the, uh, sleeping mags and things of that nature. About creating a lot of them for that.
All right, I'm not too much, okay. One, two, five, nine, ten.
Make a motion for it. One, two.
Well, nine and ten, the bottom of the workhouse, the sheriff's office, everything, all right. About five in the sheriff's office is where I've got it. Which is ninety thousand, five, twenty-one. And on the park, seven, three, three, thirty-two, which is one sixty-three, eight fifty-three. That's what, that's what Ryan said, if you need it on those two.
All right, let's me hear the motion one more time.
I make a motion of, we fund these with the sheriff's office, nine, ten, one through five. And the jail cameras, video cameras, and jail radios on nine and ten.
Nine and ten.
On the workhouse.
Okay.
Did you say a one?
So, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Tommy Page to fund sheriff's office, one through five, and on workhouse number nine and ten, seconded by Blake Sample, correct?
Correct.
Any discussion? Call the robe?
Yeah, okay.
Oh, oh, got a discussion?
It wasn't going to go to the floor, but.
That's not what the motion was.
And we're going to add to it, but that will have to report to the committee.
Is that how I see the difference?
Understood.
Because that's what we. Do you, uh, are you going to do a transfer tonight? You going to have her make a transfer tonight?
Yep. We didn't do that with other officers. You did that with others?
I don't have a problem with that, that, I don't mind.
Okay.
See, now, see, if we definitely want, we definitely want to go through that. Is he now requested on item number two, the twenty-three, nine?
If it's fifty-eight, four, the nine. Yeah.
Thank you, go ahead.
Oh, my machine was the twenty-three thousand, nine ninety-one eighty, was already, uh, spent in October. So, I subtracted it from fifty-eight thousand, so it's thirty-four thousand, four ninety-eight, twenty.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Number two?
Thirty-four thousand, four ninety-eight, twenty. It comes with a budget amendment.
So, that's what we're going with, that's thirty-two thousand.
That is what I only said, if y'all want to see something, get right now.
All right, so we read, state this, motion, Tommy Page, on sheriff's office, one through five, workhouse, nine and ten. And anything else that's remaining, we'll go back for the budget committee. Seconded by Blake Sample. Blake, is that right?
Does that number include the engine on maintenance truck?
Does not.
Can we add that one, too?
Tommy, do you want to redo your motion on that? You want to rescind your motion? Uh, we have a request to add the maintenance truck engine. We can do it on a separate motion after this is called.
You need it? He would help me with this, make the motion also.
All right, amend the motion to sheriff's office. One through five, workhouse, number five, nine and ten. We still have a second on that?
I have a second.
Well, Blake's got a second on it.
I mean, sheriff, sheriff is, is, I mean, he's, he's asking the engine, but that's not a necessity. He's, you're saying that that can be fixed that later day, correct? We've already worked the engine, uh, you know, it's going to kind of complete my, my vehicle maintenance line item. But I can come back later, if it's easy to do it that way. I can come back later, and we, we can talk about that, budget, we just.
Got a motion on the floor, we got a second already for one through five, and nine and ten. Call the robe.
Terry Allen.
Yes, sir.
Randy King.
Yes.
Andy Anderson.
Yes.
Jack Johnson.
Yes.
Nick Peterson.
Yes.
Doug Ross.
Yes.
Jeff Jones.
Yes.
William Carter.
Yes.
Tommy Page.
Yes.
Thomas DeGaw. Yes. Todd Richardson.
Yes.
Everwood.
Yes.
Matt Kynan.
Yes.
Blake Sample.
Yes, sir.
Motion, Terry, thank Sheriff.
Thank y'all.
Sheriff, uh, only another items, make sure you get with, uh, my office, and we'll get it for the budget committee.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Good to see you, LP.
Thank y'all.
Next item transferred court, you have a list. Um, Lee Miles' office requests seventeen thousand, six hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. Uh, she's here. Um, any, any questions? I entertain a motion.
I have some good news to report. I haven't, I met with the IT people, it's fourteen thousand, and, let me frame y'all, to remind you that. Fourteen thousand, five sixty-seven, sixty-seven. After meeting with the IT people, that's what I'm saying. We were able to do away with some of the printers and the computers.
Very good job.
Good job.
New cost, uh, the diligence, fourteen thousand, five sixty-seven, and sixty-seven cents. You guys are receiving some documents being passed out.
Do you get a motion for your next question?
We need to have a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it.
You got that? Eric Wood. Any discussion?
I'd like to have some questions here.
Yes, sir.
Four credit card machines.
Yes, sir.
Why do we need four credit cards?
Each of the individual, the, uh, situation of the office duties required each of us to have our own, so there would be three, and they were holding four out of the criminal justice complex. And I thought out of the abundance of caution and sticking with the technical staff, that we might need one out there for any kind of files. But if not, basically, we couldn't turn anything that we need.
So, each, each individual did, but it's all the credit card?
Yes. So, we have three employees, so each one of us, and then because we, our offices are here, but we do some files out there, because it's going to be E-fine, they might submit it there while we're out there, not be indigest and have to pay.
I understand that part of it. I just couldn't figure out why we need, need, what for each individual to do.
I'm hoping we don't, quite frankly.
Doctor, how many do you have? Credit card, credit card machines in your office? Four, are they tied to each computer? Okay. Any other discussion? A motion, second. Call the robe.
Andy Anderson.
Yes.
Jack Johnson.
Yes.
Nick Peterson.
Yes.
Doug Ross.
Yes.
Jeff Jones.
Yes.
William Carter.
Yes.
Tommy Page.
Yes.
Thomas DeGaw.
Yes.
Todd Richardson.
Yes.
Everwood.
Yes.
Matt Kynan.
Yes.
Blake Sample.
Yes.
Terry Allen.
Yes.
Randy King.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, the next item is, um, register of deeds. Um, Doug's not here tonight, Doug's at the hospital with his wife, uh, hoping to have a, a bouncing baby pretty soon. So, I told Doug I'd stand in for him. Uh, Doug's office is requesting a thirty-six-inch color copper scanner, uh, placed in his office, that also will be utilized by Gary Polk's office. This is used to scan implants, deeds, things of that nature, and on print. Um, this is on a sixty-month, uh, a maintenance agreement, um, before you. Doug requests you guys, uh, consider this purchase for his office.
Someone?
Jack Johnson made a motion.
I'll say it.
Tonya, second. Any discussion?
I guess I have a question. Uh, is this in part of funding, um, that it's on a contract? Is that any issue with how that is, um? Maybe?
It would make me pay a lot, um, it's a monthly.
Would it be appropriate to do that, and him disperse it over time? Would there be any? Or is that, is that payable in one month's sum?
This is payable in one month's sum, but it still has a sixty-month maintenance agreement that comes with it.
Oh, well, I miss that one, too.
But fine.
What's the cost of the one month?
I said that.
I mean, what's the cost of the one month? Three hundred and sixty-three, three forty-five per month maintenance agreement. What's the cost of it?
For sixty months, whatever they, what they have to. I don't, I don't have that price to come out. I want to say it was around, I don't have it. And it's not this fact.
Is it any cheaper?
No, it's the same, whether you do a month or total.
Be around twenty-five dollars a dollar.
Yes.
So, what's the, the foot, John, that's five hundred square foot per month, anything over twenty-five cents a square foot? So, we're buying machines, and we're going for paying anything over five hundred square foot a month, we're having to pay back, and then we're gonna do that?
Let's just, uh, postpone this to the next meeting when Doug can be here. I think that's a fair assessment. Are you good with that? Make a motion? Jack, second? So, there's seconds left?
I'll say it.
Andy, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm glad you're here, seeing the pressure, they just told him to ten thousand dollars for a plaque scanner. He's like, two dollars.
Okay. Well, they have some other questions, if it's forwards of footage, that I can answer to Doug. It's, it's not a showstopper, so it's good.
Do we need to rescind the motion?
For what?
The motion of the nine, the change, if the other motion, if that rescinds it?
Y'all made a motion to?
To approve it.
Oh, rescind the motion, yes, let's skip that. Thank you. So, there's a motion to approve it, may I get a motion to rescind it? Thank you. No motion?
I make a motion to rescind it.
Rescind it, got a motion to rescind it? Jack Johnson, second, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Commissioner, speak on.
That's going before the budget committee?
It already has. Uh, it's already pending for the budget committee. What's that? Uh, nothing's changed on it, but it can, if y'all can put it back in front of the committee. I don't think he's part of the, the budget committee, so he's going to sit out that question, I think. All right, five point, one point four, uh, Director Wish is not here tonight. He's had a, uh, a fixate, T double A, double A. Entertaining a, a motion to, uh, postpone that?
So move it.
I say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Rescue Squad.
Uh, I think I sent, everyone should have had emails from me last month. Uh, just a couple quick things, just to hear, and so, we answered one hundred and fifty-nine calls in the year. Uh, roughly, call average was, uh, one thousand, one hundred thirteen man-hours on those one hundred and fifty-nine calls. Um, I guess my question is, do y'all have any questions for me? Uh, any of the stuff that I sent you guys?
Yeah. Okay. This truck. This is about the truck. It's a, it's a. It's a two-thousand, six, F four fifty. Is that a big one?
Yes, sir.
Hundred and nineteen thousand miles.
Yes, sir.
Is there something wrong with that truck?
Um, we spent about nine thousand dollars in the last twelve months on it. Uh, we, it could be sold if we purchased a new truck, but I mean, it's got the six-oh B C D.
It's running now, right?
It's running right now, yes, sir.
That truck don't give me enough, right?
No, I thought so. No. Not really six-oh.
Okay, you have still have the truck that you own, it's thirty-five thousand dollars.
Well, we paid eight thousand dollars on it, we owe about twenty-eight thousand now.
Okay, so, how's that truck?
How is it what?
How's that financed?
It financed the first time.
First time, yes. But, the way I understand it, the four, four rescue squad members had to sign for that? Or did you, did you borrow the money from the bank?
We borrowed the money from the bank. Now, the rest, the rest two of us, I believe, two of us signed.
The two of you had to sign?
Yes, yes. We had to get them all, our, our inventory stuff, which that's where our bank had been involved.
So, why, why did you get the coast sign?
Do I know?
Why did you get the coast sign?
That, I didn't acquire two signatures, that's all I had. She told me we had to have two signatures, we could be in a five-o, and so.
I think initially it was four, and then she got Jeff and all, and it was two, was the way it is the change. So, if the rescue squad defaulted, I. Do you have to pay for it, you and another person, or is it? I'll go and show you.
Yeah, I have a question for me, I guess. If we, if the county agrees to help fund a vehicle for the rescue squad, uh, are we legally bound with that vehicle? Or, um, what are the liabilities in regards to that?
So, if, what you're saying, Nick, is that specific question about entering into a second agreement with the rescue squad, uh, in which the county would retain ownership of, um, of the property, should the rescue squad ever come insolvent? Uh, there is a concern that we could incur some liability if there were some issues with the equipment. There could be some, some liability on the rescue squad, yes, possible.
Has anybody thought about trying to command the rescue squad was kind of a hard problem?
That was brought up in our meeting last year, they might as well be damned, it's no decision on my part.
So, what if we decide not to, to fund it?
That's a strong decision.
Did you bring the financial statements to me?
I have.
You give us all the capital, I know you said.
I, I sent it, you know, I mean, I can print it off and bring it to you, but.
But I'm not, so.
Okay, I can print it off and give it to you, appreciate that.
I'd like to type it, I'd like to motion, we type it, yes, to the next meeting.
Postpone this to next month's meeting?
Yes.
Got a motion supposed to postpone this to next month's meeting? Jack Johnson?
I'm not down for you to postpone it. I'm just curious, I mean, we keep pushing it down the road, at some point, we're going to have to, we're going to help it, though.
I agree.
That's my opinion.
I agree. We got a motion right now. Is there a second?
I want a second until we get my resolution.
Scott, a second to postpone it. Now, the discussion. Commissioner Todd, uh, your question's a good, it's a good question. We postponed this, I think, since October.
Yeah. Um. We're, we're open to signing an agreement that if something happens to the rescue squad, that, you know, that equipment is faulty, and this money comes back to the county.
See, and that's the problem, if that's going to count, we can go to the liability.
I, I understand. Uh, we signed an agreement with nine and one, they purchased twenty-five radios for us about four or five years ago. That those twenty-five radios that we purchased, if anything, that happens to the rescue squad, those radios go back to nine and one. But I understand from a legal standpoint, too, I mean, you got to protect the interest of the county. Uh, I understand that. So, legally, you can sign an agreement that it goes back to the county, with them being under that charter?
You can, but the problem is, is that if there's an issue with the equipment, say somebody's harmed, because they put it faulty, or, you know, whatever, if it ever happened, then the county could possibly be on purpose of the fault, it's almost probable.
Is that after the fact, if it goes back to the county, after the fact?
Say they can.
Is it after the fact? Are you saying after the fact? After it goes back to the county?
No, even before then.
Even before?
Yes, even before, that was my understanding, having talked with C-Task, who spoke with the local department.
So, it's basically like the county owns the vehicle, leaving the legacy of you, so?
There, there is a possibility that a good plan is flawed, and could have, yes.
Is that because of the way it's modeled?
I don't know that.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, it depends on who, I don't know, having the title, but, because our insurance would be B I S, the same insurance working here.
I get the question at the end of the day, is this commission want to fund this project, or do they not? Uh, and that's what I ask the commission to consider. Uh, we're going to keep kicking this down the road, so, uh, uh, we don't have to spend the money anytime soon, but we need to make a decision. All right, so I got a motion, second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, please. All right, so, uh, five point, one point four, I'm sorry, point five, the EMA. Uh, I'd like to send this to the budget committee, uh, if you guys, well, they haven't had the chance to look at that. Can I get a motion for that? All right. Got that, back?
Eric Wood.
All in favor? Opposed? All right, new business, uh, is Chief Murphy in here? Hey, Chief, if you don't mind, just come, come up for a minute, I want to, I want to brag on your department, you're the, you're the face of it. Five point, one point five, the EMA.
Be sure, be, be sure you stay.
All right, so, you look scary, but I want to, I want to, I want to let the commission know, and everybody that's listening in the, uh, internet world, and all, our, our constituents here. Uh, I want to brag on your department, uh, yours in election, the fire department. To my knowledge, y'all got your first training session last week as a joint, as a joint jury, did you not? Do you advise the commission on what y'all, how you did, and what all the benefits that was?
I wasn't present, but, uh, uh, the firefighter was the head, it, it, election, it's, uh, training facility. Uh, it was some good intensive training that went on, uh, between the two departments. And, uh, Station Seven, the central firefighting, was the primary participant with the county, although we firefighters were invited and encouraged to attend. And, uh, went very well. Uh, that's what it's all about, they're all in the same line of business, and, uh, we're capable of that.
When was the last time y'all had a training together?
In some time.
I, I appreciate you and, uh, Chief Milton working together, that's, that's, that's good for the entire county. I just want to, I just want to personally thank you from public, too, so.
It, it's, it'll be ongoing, it's a goal. We're here to take the census and fire.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
All right, six point one, on the new business, renamed Mifflin Road, Duck Road. I got a request from a constituent that lives on now Mifflin Road to request it to be changed to Duck Road. He is, uh, he owns the property, it's on the southern part of Henderson County. Mifflin Road turns into Duck Road as it crosses into Chester County. He is in the process of building a new home, and as he's trying to get things delivered to his house, it's going to Mifflin Road in Madison County. Uh, so at his request, and I've talked with our nine one one director, um, they have met. Uh, I have, well, they have signed the, uh, the approval list on there to get this renamed. Um, so it's, uh, my recommendation, or I would like to entertain a motion to have this road name changed at the landowner request.
I'll make the motion to the Duck Road West.
Well, they're gonna be, it, it, they're gonna be naming, they're gonna be numbering it from Chester County, so.
It intersects with Taker Store Road in southwest part of the county, courts just might have all. And the reason we added, the reason we.
Oh, it says Duck Road West on it.
Yeah, the reason we added west was to denote the difference. If someone was in Chester County, they would be in Duck Road. If they were in Duck Road West, then they're in Henderson County. But like Mayor was saying, we would start with the numbering at the Chester County line. It carry on through with the numbering system that Chester County uses to help the postal service. Because if you don't address it that way, it's gonna really mess up the postal service. And then another reason that we chose to put the directional west on it, we also have a belt lane off of Martin Road. And we're just trying to do everything that we can that when emergency services are dispatched out, someone's not susceptible to wrong location and then you have liability there. So we, we chose to put the directional of west to, um, Henderson County and try to make it different on that line.
I think that's what I thought.
Yeah, yes, that's what, that's what it says on here.
He said Duck Road.
Yeah, thank you for correcting.
I make the motion that we made, rename it Duck Road West.
We just want to make sure we cover our liabilities.
Got a motion from Commissioner Page to rename Mifflin Duck Road West, seconded by Todd Beaton. Any discussion?
How many, how many portions are a little bit affected by that?
As far as I know, which property's on them, that owns property on that four acres of land.
Right. He owns both sides of the road.
Right. And the postal service said it actually questioned about making the numbering change to yours about what it was.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor? Say aye. Any opposed? All right, six point two. Property Sester has, uh, got a resolution for you guys to, uh, pass the continuous six-year reappraisal cycle. Any other questions? Is Gary in to ask? Gary Pope. You guys had time to talk to Gary about this? Yeah, he's asking for you guys to pass aye.
I'll make the motion, please.
Jack Johnson made a motion, passing, uh, got a second. Doug Ross second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Here's six point three, highway department lead policy. Superintendent?
I'm just making justice in my vacation lead policy for my employees. Lawyer assistant, finance director, it's all budget. Everything's getting financed, I'm actually be reading to the minutes, I believe that's all we have to do. I do have another form of business that has been brought to me third time. So it wasn't in your package, but while I'm here speaking, I, I commission to speak on that.
Let's go ahead and get this right here. Uh, give them a moment to review that.
May I ask you a question if you lead policy?
Yes.
So the man's got three, three weeks vacation, but, uh, he walks in the office, says, I don't, I quit, I'm gonna quit a job, I'm leaving. You gonna pay him those three weeks' leave?
Vacation has to be paid, I believe.
I didn't, I thought if you quit a job on your own, it can have to be paid, so.
And legal places, um, I think that's right.
I think that's all.
This is going to be retention program. I mean, we had eight or nine car over the last year. So we're trying to do something to retain the employees that have.
Just don't affect their overall budget?
No, no money change.
It's your recommendation?
Recommendation.
Got a motion? Doug Ross, a second. Blake Stansfield, any discussion?
We have both calling, just ready to work.
Does it not need re?
The other thing that brought my attention, I said it.
We need to vote on this first?
I don't think the record better vote. That was just read into the meetings, that changed my policy.
All right, go ahead.
Thursday afternoon, I received an email from the, uh, emergency management director that, uh, he had seen some disturbing activity out west over two. The mayor was copied on the email. And I've been in contact with the principal out there and students who've been there. We had an ongoing problem. Nancy Wilson Drive is a county road. That means I can go it, y'all can go it. And it runs into the west over two parking area. What they're asking for, and what I'm asking for, is permission coming forward to make that a one-lane, only, one-direction, only road that pick up and drop off time. To, for the safety of children and everything, faculty out there that's trying to get the children on and off the buses. We've had some incidents with, um, people going the wrong, not going the wrong way. They're going the way the road was laid out. The whole purpose of Nancy Wilson Drive was to double-sack traffic out there to keep about a creaster road, which is extremely high traffic here. So I've been asked by the school superintendent and principal out there to make this recommendation, I was. All I'm asking for is yes or no, or I can put the signs there. Since it is a candidate.
Make the motion, please. Good guy. We need to say it, I'll say it.
Did it the wrong way or did it?
I mean, money due, I would. School board or the highway department will be our funds for the sign.
Correct.
Do we have any other roads in county restricted in this way?
Uh, no, but I have checked around other counties and actually have some sample signs of, um, Adams and McHenry County, and, and, uh, we have a person that actually lived in this area that worked out poison business. Sent the recommendation to me of what type of sign. Legal wise.
Would this be twenty-four hours of just drop-off time?
Pick up and drop off.
There's no drop-off time, so wouldn't it break your job?
Any other family?
It would be through traffic.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so literally just changing the gearing to pick up and drop off.
All right, any more discussion? Calling.
The principal be a very good man. That is what we, I said, I've met with Mr. Wilson, Brian Hayes, two busman. Everybody had a statement out there recommending some form of sign.
Do you believe it will go?
I, you can't hurt, you can't tell what people will do. Some people don't read signs.
Is that, is that road have, you know, so high?
It does, it's lovely, yeah.
Any more discussion?
Does that not gonna make a confusion? Is that one, you know, here is drop off time, pick up and drop off? Can't see or do that?
Yes, sir, it will. But I mean, if it's nine o'clock at night and there's no students present, I don't see no way they can. Get themselves, like.
The paperwork's go down here in the city, I mean, that's the teachers or the teachers, I mean, if somebody comes out there and they get the red traffic in the morning and the night. Probably somebody out there that could do that.
Well, you're putting them at, at a risk standing out in traffic, I mean.
Well, these, these teachers down there, standing out in the middle of the road.
Well, our thing, I mean, we do it too. It's our job to be in the middle of the traffic, I think, yeah. I don't think the church park has enough available in road easily, margin of traffic claim that they're seeing.
Right. You gotta get a train, not eventually. You gotta get a train.
Is there a possibility, just can you took the consideration of making it a one-way street?
I, I, that was my recommendation to them. They said they would be happy if we just get sad.
But I mean, your recommendation to make it a one-way street, you may not be better off to do this, if you put that, put that on a future.
I stand with you.
You gonna make the motion, I would say, huh?
I, I.
Put it down, why don't they even need to? Can you, can you gate it?
We can't legally gate it, it is a county road. Now, if we rescind it all, turn it back over to the school board, they could gate it. But then someone has to be there to open and close that gate anytime there's any kind of traffic, like I said.
Of course, new property.
We need to turn it back over to the school property. That entire road is built through school property. They, they don't wear a time like that.
Is the local resource officer there at Westover?
As of Friday, when I'm at that big, the principal, they have a field resource officer.
Where?
Westover.
There was no officer there.
Twice he has assigned to Westover. She was there today?
Well, she wasn't there practically.
I think she's at Penn House.
What I thought, not out there today.
But what is the policy in Westover to pick up and drop off? Is it something that is issued, I guess?
There is a big problem with traffic back there, I said it. Creaster road, it got so bad that it was backing up in four quarters. Mr. Tyler, he was a P dot at the time when all that was done, he designed this plan and put it into place, he was a P dot engineer down there. And Mr. Jimmy Tyler. I actually was the one that filled the road under Mr. Andrew, such a big at that time.
What's, what's the actual problem that they're running into?
Um, in the afternoon, especially when they're.